Hey Rod. And Melissa.
Hey there.
I don't know when Tom's piece will come up on the agenda, but he's currently on the new parent night for Marion Cross Zoom call.
Yeah, he said he'd just pop in and I said we'd just make time for him when he could pop into the meeting. And he was going to try and bring the facilities guys, but he wasn't positive if they'd be able to come tonight, just with school and all.
Cool, thanks.
Does anyone know if Ernie is coming?
I don't know.
Okay. Jeff Goodrich said he was not coming, so we're just waiting for Ernie, I think, and then we can start.
We have a quorum, I think.
Okay, I thought I'd give him one more minute, just if he was having.
Okay.
Okay, well, if we have a quorum, then let's go ahead and get started and hopefully Ernie will join us. I hope everyone had an opportunity to review the documents and review the agenda. Were there any comments or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Great. Would anyone like to move to approve the agenda?
No moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, so our meeting objectives, as we laid out last time, was to review the draft of the municipal planning grant that Rod put together and sent out in our packet. And the school wastewater update, which I touched on that Tom Cannon is in another meeting, but I did tell him whenever he could get out, we would stop what we were doing at that point and let him address the planning commission with an update. After that, if we have time, we can talk about the next steps we want to take in terms of wastewater, what we see the planning commission doing. And finally, a quick report from Jackie on the town plan action items. Okay, at this time, are there any comments from the public on anything that is not on the agenda? Stuart.
I'd like to revisit what occurred at your last meeting concerning civility. I think that we need to stick to the issues, avoid personalities, and not be guided by what's going on nationally, which is, I think, deplorable. I think there are plenty of issues to talk about that we can talk about without any ad hominem attacks, without any disparaging remarks.
Okay, I completely agree with that and I think that's something.
And I hope that we can observe that going forward. There's one other comment I'd like to make.
Okay.
And it's short. And that is with respect to the minutes, I'd like to see a little bit more detail in the minutes so that opinions are reflected. And I'm not saying that the statute requires it, because I don't think it does necessarily require it, but we have a pretty good example from the select board minutes where there is quite a bit of detail in those minutes. And I would hope that you, we tend to provide more detail rather than less detail, especially where you've got a topic that is of concern to people.
Okay, well, we can talk about that. We definitely have talked about that a lot as a group in the past about what we want our minutes to look like, and that's something that we can continue to discuss. So thank you for that comment. Are there any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and discuss, or sorry, we need to review and approve the minutes from August 27. And since those were emailed out, we have gotten some requests for modifications of the minutes. And I can briefly summarize, well, we amended for Jackie's cut that we didn't have the vote on an item captured. And so I think Rod sent an update out about that. Jeff Goodrich requested, who's not here tonight, but he requested that after item number six, that looking forward, recognition of appropriate OML process will be important, especially in light of concerns he raised about OML while the commission worked on the town plan. So that was a comment that he had made and he's requesting us to amend that in. And then Stuart Richards had sent an email which was sent out to all of you. In item 11, before the Roger Arnold comments, Stuart Richards commented that the commission appears to be contemplating doing its own sewer study in 2005. The select board appointed a 10-member subcommittee to undertake a sewer study. The commission has many issues to deal with and is unlikely they can do a sewer study in a meaningful way. He questioned the need for another study pointing to the conclusion of the 2005 study. Does anyone have any discussion on that? Okay, is there a motion? So I mean, I'm going to ask for more comments at the end, but just so that we can move forward in an efficient way before Tom comes on, I'm going to ask if you could hold your comments to the end when we open it back up for public comments.
Just one brief question, and that is, can you include the comments that I made in my email in a revision of the minutes?
Um, I don't. That's, I mean, that's up to vote for the planning commission. I mean, it's not my decision. We, you know, as our practice is not to just write down verbatim what everyone has commented and put it in the minutes, because that would be difficult and
I'm not asking for a verbatim, I'm just asking for my comments which were made during public comment that they be included in the minutes.
Okay, I summarized what I believe to be what you were talking about. Can any discussion from other board members about how they would like to handle the amending the minutes? Jeff LaBelle?
So I do want to, I mean, as important as the minutes are, I don't want to be in a position where members of the public tell us what should be in the minutes and give us long statements to be included. I think the appropriate place to handle that is to include it in correspondence. And Mr. Richards' comments have been included in the correspondence, I believe, right? You sent that around. Rod, will that be somehow included in some form of correspondence either for this meeting or next meeting so that his records could be, his comments can be captured for posterity purposes?
It was sent too late to be included in the packet, so as an item of correspondence, so it'll appear in the next meetings next meetings packet under correspondence.
I think that would be an appropriate way to handle that. And so Melissa, you proposed just a short version, right? And that works for me.
Okay, and in the Goodrich as well, the brief passage that I read on that. Or does someone want to make a motion as to?
I approve the minutes with the amendments that Melissa read with respect to Mr. Goodrich and Mr. Richards.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Leah.
Thanks. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all in favor. Thank you.
So you have people on the phone, Melissa, Leah is on the phone. Are you able to record her vote too?
I, yeah, I guess I should ask Rod. Did you, you got Leah? You're muted.
Leah, do you want to record your vote?
I got Leah as an affirmative vote. It might be handy if Leah is on the phone for us to do either a quick roll call or at least just make sure that we've captured Leah's vote as we go forward.
Okay, great. Okay, announcements, reports, updates, and correspondence. I am not aware of any. Rod, anything from you?
In brief, no. The only thing to add is an item under the consideration of the municipal planning grant in terms of a brief update on where we are with that, but that's it. So it'll come up under the next item anyway.
Okay, well, do you want to lead off with the draft, which thank you for doing so quickly?
You're welcome.
For the municipal grant.
So, um, let me, let me just try and give some context to commissioners. This document is an odd document. This is a Word document and it's kind of clumsy. It's the application guide and it's meant as kind of a study guide. So you practice your answers in this Word document and then you have to upload it to an online grant program. And that's got certain kinds of constraints. So you'll see, you know, character, you know, the size of the the size of the answer measured by characters, including spaces and those kinds of things. So there's some virginity in it and then there's some clumsiness because ultimately I'm going to cut and paste answers out of this to the online version of the application of the grant program itself, assuming that we're moving forward. So I just wanted to give you that context and try and explain why there's so much highlighting and weird stuff going on in the document. The second thing is that I already shared this draft with the Turbos Regional Planning Commission, partly because we mentioned them in this grant application as a regional team player or participant in the potential project. And they were happy to see this application for this, for this project. And they've written a letter of support already, assuming that we're going to submit this grant application. So it's indicating that it's consistent with regional priorities. That helps in the scoring of the grant application. So just very quickly, you'll see me give the project a title, a subtitle, a brief description, and then some technical staff around planning status eligibility, what kind of a town we are. Are we, do we have an adopted plan? Yes, we do. Do we have an approved plan, which then means that the regional planning commission can say that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing with the planning program? Yes, we do. No, we're not part of the consortium. Yes, this project is important and has some urgency with regard to the demand for housing in the wider region. And what other funding sources have we looked for? The explanation there is that there really are no other funding sources. It's kind of an odd question. We could self-fund it, I guess, but, you know, a reasonable and typical answer is it's ineligible, it's ineligible project for the municipal planning grant program to fund. So are we ready? And with that question, what they really mean is have you set up the context for doing this work? And that basically means, does this proposed project fit with what you thought you were going to do and said you were going to do in a town plan? So this is on page eight and I basically just list out all the objectives, policies, and basically just objectives and policies that fit that answer, of which there are several. And so, and one action from the housing chapter. So the justification for this project can be found in the town plan. Then there's some other background material. And there I explain how the project would complement the work of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and the Energy Committee. And then there's questions about project management here. Oh, we're about to be joined by Tom Cannon, so I'm going to let him in and then we can, we can figure out what to do. We can step off this and return to it in a little while if you will want to switch to Tom Cannon.
Hi, Tom.
Sorry I'm late.
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay, we were just talking about something completely different, so, and I was getting tired of the voting. Do you want to, do you want to switch to Tom, Melissa, or do you want to finish?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
If you're in the middle of something, I'm happy to, I can wait.
We were kind of sick of listening to him, frankly. Yeah, now would be great. So for those who don't know, Tom, he's the chair of the Norwich School Board and he generously offered, or agreed to come speak to us about what is going on with wastewater at the school. So Tom, if you just had some comments or brief overview of what's going on, that would be great.
Yeah, happy to do that. Again, sorry I'm late. I was in another Zoom room, probably Brian's wife, probably in another room there participating in the one I was just in with the new parents over at the Marion Cross School, so.
The kids are somewhere.
They're somewhere in between, right? That's funny, because I didn't see them on her video either. Well, thanks for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. And as you may have guessed, we've actually been busy with a few other things other than wastewater lately, which I am hoping to return to once things settle in a little bit more at the schools. But I think the first few days back on campus has been going well, so we've been happy to see that. And I hope others have felt that way, as well as they've driven by the school and seen some kids running across the playgrounds again. But just to give you the full background, and I'm sorry if most of you already know it, but a couple of years ago, we, well, we've known for a while that we needed to address the septic system. And a couple of years ago, we began in earnest with an assessment of how to go about doing that. We received some recommendations from the firm that we were working with, a member of the planning commission here, Jeff Goodrich's firm. And were advised that there were three potential options we could begin looking at. Those were just starting points and we've left open the potential for other options to consider as we move forward. The three initial options that we looked at and are continuing to look at was a replacement of the septic system where it currently is, which is on the Marion Cross green. Well, the leach fields go out onto the green. Replacement on the Peish property, which is across from the school, adjacent to the school property near the Melfry nature area. And a potential hookup to the Hartford wastewater system that would include collaboration or partnership with a couple of the area businesses along Route 5 heading towards Hartford where there's a pump station just over the Norwich Hartford border there. Over the course of that first year plus, we pursued all of those options, met with the Hartford Select Board and Town Manager and Department of Public Works folks there. Did our assessments of the Marion Cross current system in the green and did some hydrological tests on that. And did similar testing over at the Peish property. Some of the results that came back determined for us at least at this point that the is not available, please get some sort of additions there.
Tom, you're breaking up a little bit. Can you just talk about, repeat what you just said?
Sure. And if I break up again, I've been having some internet issues. I may just switch off the video and go clear there, but give me a heads up if I do break up again.
Okay.
So with regard to the Hartford discussions, we met first with the town manager there, Leo Puller, and then Brandon Godfrey came on board after that and had proposed to them the possible connection of Marion Cross with three partnered companies along the Route 5 corridor there, which would have included the Co-op Service Center now, the King Arthur Flower Facility, and the Norwich Commerce Park there where the hardware store is. And we brought that to the town manager and then the select board afterwards. The town manager, Brandon Godfrey at the time, recommended to the select board and they took his recommendation was that they needed to do some more of their own assessments on Hartford's wastewater capacity. So they were going to begin in on that assessment at the early part of the year and see where that turned out with their own results. Brandon at the time did think that the study would probably take upwards of a year to get the results from that study. And so one of the things I need to do is return to the Hartford Select Board and probably Dan Fraser as its chairman and see where they are in that study. As you probably know, there's an interim manager at the Hartford right now. And I think they're down to the three finalists selections for the next town manager in Hartford. So I do need to return to them and see where they are in that study to see if that might still be a possibility down the road. And then with regard to the Marion Cross system and it's the assessment of that, we did have a hydrological study done. The results came back in the May timeframe. And it was determined from that that that's also not a desirable place to put the system back in. Because it tends to act in the winter months as almost a fishbowl really, and because it's surrounded by pavement on all sides, it has an effect where it freezes up on the surface and makes it very difficult for the waste to distribute throughout the leach field currently. So it was advised that that's not the best location either. Because of these results, we have been pursuing some other options as well. And while not taking off anything on the table already, certainly still considering Peish, still considering the Marion Cross replacement where it is, but we've also reached out to some firms that do eco machines. There is a similar version of that on a much larger scale at the Sharon Rest Stop that some of you might be familiar with. And there are some firms who do that work. We've had a meeting with one of them and need to return to better understand what that could mean if we were to look at some of those options. We've looked at placing the system in other areas too. As you probably also know, the Dresden School District has property down along Route 5 as well, where a lot of our planning fields are near the farmer's market. And that's a potential option for it. And for both a traditional septic system as well as a potential eco machine type system, if that was a preferable way to go. And we also need to begin to look at other potential sites, which is still very much in development. And we would need to reach out to the town to consider other options for placement of AAS. We did reach out to the town of Hanover just to understand their capacity and what it might take to hook up to their system as well, but didn't pursue that in great detail for a couple of reasons. One is that I think that their capacity is filled with Hanover and they do have some commitments to Lebanon, as well as the length of the connection and the fact that there aren't as many partnership opportunities, if any, on the way to hooking up to Hanover's system, whereas with Hartford, there are the opportunities, potential opportunities with the businesses that exist along Route 5 currently. So that's where we are. As I said, we haven't made a lot of progress since we got the hydrological results back in May from Steve Ravel, who did that study for us. In the coming months, we are going to move ahead. We're not planning to have anything on the upcoming warrant articles for the town meeting in 2021. But we are taking some more measures to make sure that we don't have similar issues moving ahead over the cold weather months coming up this year. And to do that, we plan to fence off the portion of the green that is above the leach field again, but not the whole green ideally, as we are also planning to pump the system a little bit more often than we did in the past, certainly through the winter months, to try and alleviate the concerns with the seepage there. So I think, I apologize for the length of that short overview, Melissa, but.
That was really helpful.
That's where we are now.
Okay, great. Just Jeff LaBelle, you have a question?
Yeah, Tom, thanks for the overview. What is your timeline? When are you hoping to have a more indefinite or long-term solution in place?
Well, I would have loved to have had one already, Jeff. So it's as soon as possible, but obviously, as I've said, we want to make sure we're making the right decision that's going to have the longest term use of the system, but also at a reasonable cost to town. So as I mentioned, we're not, we don't foresee obviously putting something on the warrant article in March of 2021. I'm wary that it may even go beyond 2022 based upon what we find and how long it takes to do some of these studies. Obviously, a lot of the assessments have been held up a good bit by the current situation, but I am hoping that we can return to a more concerted effort towards what we might be able to do in the near future then.
I would just ask that as you move forward, we continue to have a dialogue between the town and the school district. I mean, I don't think the town has made any kind of, as you know, any kind of decision about how it wants to approach this issue, but it it does seem just from a matter of simple logic that if the school is thinking about connecting to a neighboring sewer system, for example, that it would be prudent for the town to try to think about whether there might be interest in collaborating or not, at least to make a decision and not just miss the opportunity to think about ways to share the costs or to, you know, take advantage of. I mean, once, you know, most of the costs are involved, are digging, right? And the cost of the pipe is relatively minor, right? You could put in a larger pipe. And so I'm not pretending that I know the answer as to where the town wants to be, and I don't know if the town can accommodate your schedule, but one reason to understand better what timeline you're on is just to understand if we wanted to sync up with that timeline, what kind of timeline we would need to follow at the town.
Jackie, is this your question?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I mean, from a planning perspective, I think it's in our town's best interest to coordinate, you know, the town and the school board together. And I guess I'd be interested to hear from Tom, you know, what do you need to do that? I know you have your hands full as it is for sure, but what do you need from the town? Just to have, you know, a discussion, to have it laid out there. Just for a small example, Tracy Hall is having their sewage trucked out. They don't even have, you know, a good system. And that's right next door to the school. And so, you know, would we think about fixing that problem as we're fixing the school problem? I know it's been referenced many times, the 2005 I know it's been referenced many times, the 2005 study, and it's great that that study got done. It's 15 years later. Is there any other analysis that would be helpful? Everybody, just to understand what is the current situation with town and septic and how's it going? I think there's a level of rigor that would be required from that type of study. That would be the most useful, you know, to the school board, to the Select Board, to the town to understand what, if anything, should we be coordinating here? Should we try to do together? Or is everything hunky dory? And if we just go fix the school, then that's the right thing to do. But I think considering the school in isolation isn't, is a mistake for the town from a planning perspective.
Well, so yeah, Jackie and Jeff both, like I've said, I'm willing to consider all options. The, the one thing I am wary of is the timeline. This is very near-term issue that we need to address. I'd be happy to hear from a larger swath of town what the interest is. I do need to, and it's my own fault, I do need to get back to the Select Board. I see Claudette's on here and
Tom, we lost
You know, I'm going to just switch off the video just for a bit, so it doesn't mess up again.
Go back to, I think we were talking about Claudette and then we lost.
Yeah, okay.
Great. So we'll try this. Sorry, it's kind of impersonal without the video, but my point was that I need to do a better job myself in reaching out to the Select Board. I'm glad Claudette's here, but I I should get over there to brief the full board on what I just briefed the Planning Commission on with the current status. I'd be happy to hear what their perspective is on, on a townwide approach. The, the approach that we took from the start was one again, in which the timeliness was the issue and the hope that we could understand what we, we could do to fix the systems issues early on. Running into some of the delays and realizing some of the things we could do to help alleviate the issues that we've realized in the past, especially now that we've got a better understanding of what's creating them has helped. But I'm always interested in hearing what, what some other options are moving forward. I haven't take, we haven't taken anything off the table and are happy to consider other means of addressing the issues, which is why we continue to move ahead with trying to learn more about these other options too, like the eco machines and, and other collaborations to to reduce costs, but also find an equitable solution.
Jackie, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Tom, appreciate that willingness to collaborate. Would it be helpful if you had an invitation from the Select Board? Would that be helpful?
That would be fine. And I, again, I realize this is on me, so I'm, I can reach out if Claudette's listening now. I'll reach out to Claudette and say I'm happy to come over there and
Yeah, good.
Come over there virtually, of course, or I can shout into Tracy Hall as well, but brief the Select Board on where we, on where we are and hopefully in the near term, like I said, we'll be able to think more about septic as we move beyond and settle into the school year.
Brian, did you have a question?
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Tom, for the summary and Jeff and he for such helpful questions. Tom, I wanted to know a little bit more about the town of Hartford's consideration of your request and the study that you mentioned that may take up to a year. How specific is that to the scenario you described with the school and the three businesses? Or is it more general about expanding, expanding capacity and service northward? And, and is, is the study already underway?
Yeah. So Brian, that's where I have to apologize because since I spoke with Dan Frazier back in the springtime, I haven't gone back for an update on the study. I don't think it had, had started at that time. This may have been as long ago as March and I, I should have checked when I had talked with Dan, but I can't recall. The, the study, in my understanding of what they were doing, and I'll have to go back to my notes as well, was that it was going to be a larger study of their own system. It wasn't just to consider what we had requested, which was Marion Cross plus the three businesses along Route Five. However, they were willing to consider a smaller study as part of the larger study, but not make any decisions until they had had an opportunity to conduct that larger study on the Hartford wastewater system, because they were coming up for a need to understand strategically what, what the town could support. And, and I should have mentioned too, Brian, that I, we, not just with the Hartford study there, that's actually not as much. The information isn't on the SU70 website, but other information such as the reports that we received from Pathways Consulting, as well as the Steve Revell's hydrological study on the Marion Cross Green are available on the SU70 website. When I have a moment, I can post the link to that in the chat box here as well. But Brian, that's, that is something I need to get back to. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to before this meeting, but get an update from Hartford's Select Board through, through Dan Frazier.
That's all right. Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
I see that there's a comment in the chat from Doug Wilderbean. Doug, did you want to ask a question of Tom or I'm not sure where that's directed?
Yeah, I just had a question if in the future, when you're talking about septic, since Pathways has bid on the project, if Jeff will recuse himself from discussion or voting? And if Steve Lebel is a relative of Jeff, or is that just a coincidence?
That's Steve Revell, Doug, not
Revell.
Revell, R E V E L L. I'll send you the link to the report now.
And then just a comment real quick. Jackie, are you telegraphing that you're wanting a townwide municipal septic system by tying Tracy Hall into something, or is that just separate and apart from the school system?
Doug, I'm just saying we should get all the facts on the table before we make a decision. I just think that's wise from a planning perspective. Rather than considering solutions in isolation. Just reflecting on the recent situation with the Tracy Hall upgrade.
Right.
I think a failure of that proposal was, it was an isolated proposal. And I think what people were looking for was the bigger picture. You know, one of the things that people were realizing, for example, is that we, we think we have to spend money to fix the school septic. So how can we afford Tracy Hall? Other questions I heard about it was, you know, where's, you know, what about, where's our facility plan for the town? Does, where does this improvement fit into a facility plan? And so I'm, I just think it's a mistake to make a decision about the school septic system without considering the whole town. I don't know where it's going to go in terms of what the right solution is. I don't have that answer. But what I would like to see are the facts on the table. What, you know, what's the current situation in the town? We are uncovering the situation. Tom and the group has done a good job of studying the situation in the school. Let's get the whole picture and then figure out where we should invest in a solution. What's the best solution?
Just a quick question. Where's the leach field for Tracy Hall located? Is that on Coolwell Bankers or Remax's property? I guess Rod.
Yeah, Rod, do you want to answer that?
Hello. My understanding is that there isn't one. My understanding is that the waste that's collected at Tracy Hall is hauled to the Hartford wastewater treatment plant on a regular basis and it's processed as septic there.
And so, so it's always been that way. There's no leach field per se. It's just a tank.
I can't speak to 1844, but I think in, I think in modern times that that's been the solution ever since the parking, there is, ever since the parking lot's been blacktopped at least.
I'm glad we didn't buy that property when it went on the market, the former church parsonage.
I'm not sure about those details. I haven't been around long enough, but my understanding that and that's the only information I have is that there is no leach field. There's no treatment on site. Everything is hauled. Which is, you know, that, that's, that's the arrangement.
Great. Well, I just want to, is there, are there any more questions for Tom or any more discussion so that I know Tom's had a long day and lots of meetings? Stuart, did you have a question?
More of a, more of a comment. I just wanted to thank Tom for the efforts that he's put in. This is, he's got a, you know, I'm looking at it from the outside rather than from the inside, but, but the, the amount of work and the number of things that have gone into trying to get the school up and running in a situation which is very difficult. I just think a huge thank you is, is due to Tom. I did want to add a couple of, a couple of suggestions to the sewage discussion for Tracy Hall. So the, the gallonage that was talked about with Hartford initially was around 20,000 gallons, which would have included the three businesses plus the school. And I don't, as Tom has already indicated, that never got to a, a finalization because of various things that Hartford is studying it, et cetera, et cetera. But there, there are a couple of properties that I think that I've talked about with Tom, and I'd like to mention them just so that folks are aware. It seems like Huntley Meadows could be, could be a possibility, could be a possibility. There's also additional town land that's associated with the, with the wells. I'm not sure how far that land is, whether it's economic or whether it's suitable. But what I was, what I was hoping to see, and I don't know whether it's feasible or not at this point, but what I was hoping to see was, was a backhoe or hand auger or some, some testing that was done before the fall. So that when the high water season comes around, we would know a little bit more about which pieces of property would actually lend themselves to wastewater disposal. And it might not necessarily, depending on the capability of the land, it might not necessarily be limited to Marion Cross or to the, you know, to Tracy Hall or, you know, without the preliminary testing that I'm referring to is something that's pretty customary. It can happen pretty quickly and it can eliminate any forward motion and further expense if in fact the, the soils show that they're not suitable. So I'm just hoping that Huntley Meadows and any other, any other possibilities are investigated in a preliminary way to try and eliminate things that are not going to be suitable.
Okay, great. Thanks. I think Jackie had seen your hands back up. Did you have another question or comment?
I think I'm all set. I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Well, if everyone is all set, then I just want to thank you, Tom, again for coming and spending your time and that was really helpful for us to get that update. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And now I guess we can go back to Rod if you want to.
Can I ask, Rod, when you go through, if it's okay with you, I mean, we'd love to just hear the big picture, like why you picked this particular way of framing the project. I'm less interested in all the individual, like, I just want to get to the heart of it, if that's okay. I don't want to rush, rush you too fast, but if you could get to the heart of like, what is the specific proposal and why did you pick this particular way of framing it? As opposed to something that's a, like a broader framing around our, the need for zoning changes?
Um, at the last meeting of the Planning Commission in August, I gave a set of possible planning grant applications, subjects or topics. This was one of three, I guess, and it was to look at the density factor, which is embedded in the subdivision regulation. And people agreed that that's what they wanted to do. So that's what I went forward with. And in a nutshell, what the study attempts to do is go back in time 10 years before this this particular tool was included in the subdivision regulations. I think it was incorporated through amendment into the subdivision regulations in 2002. So by going back to 1990 and looking at the pattern of development from 1990 to 2000 or 2002, we'll get a sense of what prior conditions were and what the settlement pattern in Norwich was. And then by studying from 2002 till now, we'll have 20 years of data on what the pattern of settlement in Norwich is with this tool, the so-called density factor calculator. And we'll be able to assess whether it's actually helping Norwich achieve its stated goals for settlement patterns and housing targets that we've got in the town plan. And so it's a necessary first technical step in a larger project, which will be the revision of the entire zoning and subdivision regulations. But this is the unique to Norwich. As I understand it, Norwich is the only town in the state that's got this tool. And so it needs to be better understood. And the, and to see whether it's effective. So the project is, look at the tool. So it's, it's quite narrow. But it's an important step and it will require sustained analysis by a consultant to figure it out and extensive GIS work. It'll include a build-out analysis which will be able to show to people under hypothetical conditions with a set of assumptions, what Norwich would look like if you maximized using the density factor calculator, right? And so what the density factor calculator is supposed to do is encourage settlement closer to the village and closer to existing major roads and reduce the density the further away you get from the village and basically the further up you get in elevation. And the more remote you get in terms of the length of dirt road that's traveled on to get to the parcel. So that's, that's, all those outcomes are supposed to be what the tool is capable of generating. And the question is whether it's doing it. Anecdotally, it's quite plausible, given the recent experience that subdivisions happening in Norwich don't choose to subdivide at the maximum rate. In other words, if you've got a hypothetical 50-acre parcel and you use the density factor calculator, and that means that you could get 10 parcels each of five acres. That's not what people do. People buy 50 acres and they may be subdivided into two, two 25-acre parcels. So you're getting a take-up rate or subdivision rate I think at a way lower rate than, than the density factor calculator would allow for. And so maybe this is the best thing we've got going. Maybe this is a really important tool and it is helping shape Norwich's settlement patterns, or maybe it's not. The purpose of the study is, is to find out whether this tool does what we think it's supposed to do or not. And because we're the only ones with it, it's not like we can go and see what Shellburn's doing and how theirs is working and in what way it's different or or Chester's or anybody else's where, you know, it requires some analysis from us. So that's the way, the reason why it's framed that way. But mostly it's framed that way because that's what we agreed to, what the Planning Commission agreed to last month.
Jeff Lebel, did you have? You're the only Jeff here. Jeff?
Yeah, no, thank you for that helpful. Thanks for the helpful explanation. I, I remember talking about the fact that we were going to conduct an analysis related to helping us prepare for the zoning revision, but I, I don't remember getting into the level of detail that, that you're, you got into here. So thank you for explaining your rationale. I, I had a couple of questions. So one is whether I was curious that there was no suggestion that the consultant would consider what alternatives there might be for achieving the goals that we have, you know, as long as it seems to be focused only on sort of almost academic exercise of trying to unpack the, you know, whether it had an effect or not without asking the consultant to tell us, well, what other options do we have that we ought to consider? And why, why, you know, what are the relative merits of the different approaches? One of my questions.
Okay. So really quickly, the, the grant application does call for the consultant to make recommendations. And I guess I'm glad that you raised that point because maybe I need to place more emphasis on that. The more, the, the really, there's two things that are really unusual about Norwich. So the first one is that we've got this density factor calculator. And the second thing is And the second thing is, is that we've got very few zoning districts. And one zoning district constitutes 97% of the land area. So this density factor calculator is supposed to introduce variation in the major zoning district, which is rural residential. So rural residential is not, constitutes 97% of the land area. And the density factor calculator only works in rural residential. In the other zoning districts, it doesn't apply. So what we're trying to do, or what we have been trying to do since 2002 is use this tool to get variability in one really big area of land, 97% of the town. In every other town that I've worked in, in four states, they have a much simpler mechanism, which doesn't involve this complexity. They just have more zoning districts and the minimum parcel size steps up or down, depending on which end you want to start at. So you'll have, you know, village, you know, residential, residential one through residential three, rural, you know, rangelands, whatever you want to call it. In Pennsylvania, what, most of what is referred to as rural residential in Vermont would be referred to as estate. As in large properties that are predominantly residential in nature, but take up larger massive area. So there's, there's, there's different techniques. And the most straightforward one is just make more zoning districts with, with, with more variation in, in minimum parcel size. So I would expect that the consultant would make recommendations like you need more zoning districts or you need to tinker with the tool, you know, you need to change these, these attributes of the, of the way the tool works or something like that. But they are, they are expected to make recommendations.
So you're, you're, if you read the description of the project, it doesn't call, that I saw called for them to make recommendations, at least. Maybe I didn't read far enough along, but it, it just seemed to be an analysis without, like when, like the description of the project doesn't have like a, and propose recommendations and alternatives and help us think about the different alternatives and what are the pluses and minuses?
I, I think that's a good call out and I'll, and I'll add that. Whoops, you just, you just disappeared and came back really fast.
Yeah, you had some like blob monsters behind you.
On purpose, I was getting some blobbing going on and.
Yeah, I was ruining your really nice apartment that I've been enjoying.
Yeah, right. I know, it's, you know, it's funny, it puts me in a different state of mind just to put up the virtual background of being in like the southwest somewhere. It's amazing how that works.
The sky is just not orange enough. You need to dial out the orange.
That's bad.
I have other questions, but I'm going to defer to Jackie.
Jackie?
This isn't, this isn't really serious, but you're set, you reminds me of the Lehman Brothers set, if you ever saw that play, anyway. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Expecting you for a serious question, Jeff.
So I, you know, a second question I, so, and maybe this is not the right approach, but if, if, if they are going to come up with recommendations, do you want their recommendations to focus only on the rural residential? Or do you want them to focus on the entire system of zone, of zones, including the urban, kind of the village areas as well?
Well, going back to that remark about how 97% of Norwich is rural residential. If they nail rural residential in a better way, then we've solved most of the problem, is what I'd say. But it mean, they, what I'd expect them to do is to go back to the town plan and be guided by the town plan in terms of what's in the land use chapter and what's in the housing chapter about what, what the town expects or hopes to happen in terms of the settlement patterns. And then say, you're not going to get there with, with the current tool, you are going, you are getting there with the current tool, it's all good. Or if you want to do better at this, then you should pay attention to these things in the village district and those things to the commercial and industrial district or some, yes. So I think that as a good quality report would identify, if you like, the issues or the, the goals that are identified in the town plan and say, if you want to achieve these goals, you need to do these things. Might mean keep the tool and it might mean not.
Right, so I, I guess just, again, I read it really quickly, but I, it didn't come across to me that you wanted recommendations at all. And to the extent that you want recommendations, it seemed like you would only want a recommendation with respect to whether or not we should continue to use that tool in rural residential. But if what you really want is for them to sit, to look at the whole zoning package and say, look, focus on this tool, help us understand whether this tool works. But when you come back and, and make recommendations, please consider the entirety of our zoning and, and understand our goals in the town plan and just tell us, you know, what, what, what kinds of changes we should be thinking about as we're thinking about rewriting our zoning code to achieve our goals.
Okay, that's a good catch. In the, in the latter sections of the, of the very tedious document, including the work plan and budget, it is identified that the consultants will produce a final report with recommendations and, and present it to the planning commission. So I just need to be fed up. Thanks for that observation. It's good.
And I, I do have one other, but again, I want to let other people talk, but if, if I had another specific question.
Stuart, did you have a question?
A comment more than a question. So I can understand certainly why Rod is referring to and perhaps relying on the town plan. However, I think, I think you have to be mindful of the two surveys that were done. The first survey, 2005, 1,000 people. The second survey, 2018, 500 people. Both of those surveys were not in favor of intense development. The current town plan and the direction that you're going in is, is toward more intense development, changes in the zoning, changes in density, changes, various changes. So what I would suggest to you is that you not only be mindful of what the town plan says, which was arrived at by only a few people, and that you place some credibility in the two surveys that were done, both in 2005 and 2018, where 54% of the people who were surveyed said that they want to keep the population of Norwich approximately the same or decrease it slightly. So I, I tend to, I tend to understand where those 54% of the people are coming from. And I think that they should be given some, you know, they, they should be acknowledged in, in some way in the direction that you're going.
Okay, thanks Stuart. Jeff, it looks like you, you did have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Not to Stuart, but.
Yeah, I have another question. So you talk about doing a build-out analysis. And I'm curious about why specifically you want them to do a build-out analysis? And maybe it's just a really standard tool, but it, it's the kind of thing that, that can be very inflammatory, right? Because it, it would suggest that we could add 20,000 housing units and become like, you know, 10 times the size when we all know that that's never going to happen, you know, under any realistic scenario, given there's no development happening at all, you know. So I'm just curious, like what is the impetus for the build-out studies specifically? Why, why is that important?
You're right, it's a pretty standard tool, number one. Number two, handled, handled correctly with the right kind of assumptions, it actually can show important things. And, but it's, it's a, it's hypothetical, which is also important to remember. And so what, what it, what it can, what it can do is illustrate the, you know, if you like, the, the maximum carrying capacity or the maximum density that you could expect, given the application of the rules. There's a lot of caveats involved in that statement and there would be a lot of caveats that would be teased out and demonstrated in many kind of build-out analysis. But it's a pretty standard early cut in terms of measuring the effectiveness of any current set of zoning regulation. And so any, any meaningful review of existing zoning regulations would conduct something like a build-out analysis. The question that you raise, which is, could it be inflammatory? There's always that risk. It's important to acknowledge that upfront. And it's down to the expertise and the subtlety of the consultants to ensure that the way it's presented is not inflammatory. And, you know, it's, I don't know how else to present a response to that at this point, except to say, I don't think that the risks of inflaming public discourse outweigh the benefits of actually understanding what you thought you were going to get.
So this is, again, I, I want to help, again, I'm not a planner by trade, so I, you know, I, but I, I could imagine that in a jurisdiction where people are building out to the maximum density and there's a high demand for housing and there's a lot of development taking place, that a build-out analysis makes complete sense. I mean, I get it in that context, but in a, in a, in an area where people are building out a tiny fraction of the allowable density, what, I, I don't quite understand what you learn by, by, you know, generating a report that says that, well, if we built out at the maximum density, we, you know, we would triple the size of the town. I, I don't quite understand when, like, we can barely get anyone to build anything here. So I, I'm trying to understand the relevance of the full build-out analysis in the particular context of Norwich. And then, and then in light of that, I'm trying to understand the probative value of that exercise relative to the potential for inflammation and I don't, I'm not quite seeing the trade-off and understanding it here.
Yeah, I mean, there are good points. All I can say is that if you don't have something that, that resembles a build-out analysis and you don't have much factual material to work with. And so if you want to bump along with anecdotes and then try and build regulations off that, that's got its own risks inherent in it. And so it's an effort at doing something analytical to at least set up the basic expectations of what's going to be discussed and what, what, what is possible. Acknowledging that we are so far below, probably so far below the potential, that it raises the question as to what the point of even asking is. Like I, I don't dispute that. On the other hand, it is a data point that I think is, is useful and is kind of standard. It's a standard, it's a standard part of the kind of analytical approach that you take to establish whether a zoning, set of zoning and subdivision regulations are working at all in the first place or not.
You know, another way of thinking about it would be some sort of scenario planning where you, you kind of think, I mean, this is the kind of thing we would do in research, right? When, if we don't think that the assumption of 100% build-out is necessarily valid or the most appropriate, we might consider a range of different build-outs. So at 20% or 40% or 60% or 80% and present a range of different options, I think that would more accurately reflect. And then you could say, okay, here's where we've been up till now, you've been at about 2% of maximum build-out. And, and, you know, this is what it would look like if you went to 10% or 20%. Those numbers, I think, would be equally rigorous and analytic and would, might be more tailored to our current.
Let, let me, let me say that a subtle build-out analysis would make it really clear that it's highly unlikely that you get anything like 100%. And that, yes, exactly bracketing or saying, okay, at the current rate of construction or the current rate of development, it would take X number of years for you to add, you know, X number of housing units. So whatever it is, right? So yes, there are ways in which you could frame the build-out analysis to make it really clear that maybe the most reasonable expectation is something like, you know, 10 to 15%, not 100%.
Is that a range of, 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 you know, and to help people understand the different pathways and the different possible, you know, build-outs? That, that would be my suggestion. And I don't know if you need to put that in the proposal so much as that could be in the RFP, but I.
I think, I think you're raising really good points. I think what I'd say is that that would be one of the things that you'd actually measure the competence of the respondents on. So good consultants are going to get into that and good consultants from Vermont are particularly going to, or Northern New England are going to be particularly aware of those kinds of pitfalls. And their application will actually elucidate on that and foreground those kinds of issues. You know, generic, you know, poorly framed responses are probably not going to get into it. And then, you know, we'll be able to pick, we'll be able to pick the appropriate applicant on the basis of, you know, the quality of that response. I think Brian had a point and then we need.
Jackie actually had her hand up first.
Hang on, before we move on to Jackie, can we just, can we just address the, you know, the sidebar conversation that's going on in chat? Doug Wilberding's raised two questions and I, and I want to answer those right now just to address those issues and get them off the table. Is that all right with people?
That's fine with me.
Okay, all right. Doug, Doug, can you hear me now? Doug?
I think he's on mute, but why don't you just go ahead and answer?
He's on mute.
Doug, Doug, do you hear me? Okay, so I want the record to show that Doug Wilberding said, asked, maybe redundant, but who is the consultant, firm name and contact? Thank you. And then he posts a web link to placense.com. And placense.com, as you probably know, is the business name of my partner, Brandy Saxton. So I want to make it really clear for the record that what we're involved in here is reviewing a grant application. No decision has been made because we don't have any money and we haven't been approved for the grant. So all we're doing is that I am the staff person who wrote the grant application, which is being reviewed by the planning commission currently. The deadline for submitting the grant application is in fact October 1. And if we are successful in obtaining the grant, and that's a big if, we will know in January. And then subsequent to that, we would put out an RFP or an RFQ calling for consulting firms to respond. And under no circumstances, because of a conflict of interest, would anybody from placense, the consulting firm that my partner Brandy Saxton operates, apply in response to this request for proposals or qualifications because of the obvious conflict of interest. So if we could just let that sink in and move on, that'd be really good.
Okay. So Brian, Jackie, did either of you have anything that you wanted to follow up on with the municipal grant? Brian?
Sure, I, I think Jeff, the direction you were going, that the issues you raise are better put in the RFP is right. And presumably, if we're successful in the grant application, we'll have another crack at this to, to draft and refine the RFP for the specific deliverables from the consultant. But I agree with your points regarding the scenarios. I think that's a good suggestion.
Great. And Jackie, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I agree with Brian, but I guess I also wanted to say that, you know, the, this grant application mentions a number of times, consistent with the rural character of Norwich, which is also the thrust of the town plan, okay? The town plan does not advocate rampant development. It says over and over again, consistent with the rural character of Norwich. So let's all be clear about that, okay? And in terms of another thrust of the town plan is, let's, we're relating our rural areas right now with development. And how do we make sure, you know, we don't, we don't have death by a thousand cuts? That's where all the development has been in Norwich since 2012, I believe. So we're trying to steer random development away from the forest lands and focus it in a more ecologically sensitive way. So.
Okay, thanks for that, Jackie.
All walk away with remembering that from the town plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Rod?
Yeah, I'm glad Jackie brought that up. So, so this actually can be threaded back to Jeff and Brian's remarks, which I have found really helpful. And I will make some minor adjustments to the text in the grant application reflecting that input and I appreciate it. So that, there's kind of a two-way or a sort of a, there's two forks, there's two sides to this. So one is trying to figure out what the pattern of development is and whether that's achieving certain goals established in the town plan, say with regard to housing or a bunch of other things. And then the other one is, which we're committed to also in the town plan and also required to respond to because of regional policy and state policy, we've got to be better aware of the implications for the current pattern of development on forest block integrity and, and the natural resources. And so the, the density factor calculator is supposed to be working to ensure a sort of a high level of responsiveness to natural resource values. And it may be, and that may be one of the really important insights that come from the study, that it's actually very effective at doing that. Or it may also find that the fragmentation that's going on of the forest blocks is actually not being stalled or slowed down or addressed by the application of that tool. It might just be a matter of adjusting the tool or, or something such as that. But, um, I think that the important thing, um, for us to try and figure out is the two-pronged thing. What, are, are we protecting the village and, and ensuring adequate provision for a range of housing types on the one hand? And are we protecting the forests, forest blocks and the integrity of the natural resource inventory on the other? And this density factor calculator is supposed to be doing both. So that's, that's kind of the heart of the study. And if people think that I haven't made that point strongly enough in the application, then I, I would like to hear that so that I can reinforce that.
Jackie?
I guess just a, a question on procedure here. Do we need, um, a motion to move the, for Rod to move this application, uh, grant application forward? Is that our ultimate goal here?
That's, I was, I was going to ask the same thing because it, it has to go to the select board as well or, okay?
So, so to be clear.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's usually useful to get something from the planning commissions that, you know, some kind of vague thumbs up or not, you know, some kind of direction from you guys. Um, then the next step in this process is that at a subsequent select board meeting, I believe it's the 24th of October, it goes before, um.
September. September.
I'm sorry, it's 24th of September. It goes before the select board and they, um, they, it's, it's kind of weird. They vote on a resolution supporting the submission of the grant application. So, um, and then that's a, that's a, that's a critical piece of the application. So then on the 1st of October, I submit, you know, I go online. I load up, I load up all this stuff on an online portal, including a PDF of the resolution from the planning commission, supporting the application, if that makes sense. So it isn't, it will be important for the planning commission to indicate formally to the select board that you agree with the direction that this grant application is taking.
Uh, Brian?
And Rod, do you have a, a motion text that you would suggest? Um, I'm happy to, to come up with one, um, following Jackie's comment.
Jackie, did you have something additional?
Yeah, I was just going to say I trust that Rod will incorporate both Jeff Lebel's, uh, the discussion we have with Jeff Lebel and also this comment on the forest land and protecting the forest blocks and then getting this ready for the select board on September 24th. So go ahead, so Brian, I'm thinking our motion or whatever would, would reflect those two ideas.
Yeah, I, I'll move that it's this sense of the planning commission that the topic in this grant application is in furtherance of the town plan and its objectives and that the planning commission, um, generally supports applying for state funding, uh, for such a study.
Great. Rod, did you get that all?
Uh, most of it, yeah. I think I, I might not, I might not paraphrasing perfectly, Brian, but I think I've got, I think I've captured the gist. Is that all right?
Great. Do, do we have a second?
Email it to me. That's just fine.
You, you also have the recording, right?
What's that?
The recording of the meeting.
Yeah, I can, I can just capture it from the recording. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'll second that.
Thanks, Jackie. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Leah.
I'm saying aye.
So, sorry.
What about discussion?
There, there's lots of people who've, who've kind of gone off screen or something. Can you do a roll call or something just so I can get a bit of, and, and Jeff Goodrich has joined in. So I'm a little, I'm a little befuddled by my numbers now.
I think Jeff is asking for a discussion.
Are you, Jeff?
I am. So if, i- is this about a sewer study?
No.
No.
It's a density study, municipal grant that was in the packet that Rod sent out.
I read that. So I went under, since I've recently joined, I want to understand what this study is for.
Do you want me to explain that, Melissa?
Uh, in two sentences or less, Rod, if it's a density study, that's good enough.
It's a density study.
Is that good enough? Okay. All right. So we have, do we have to go back and remake the motion or are we okay to just leave it? Motion, second, all in favor, um, Jackie Allen?
Aye.
Jeff Goodrich?
I abstain.
Uh, Brian Loeb? That's nigh. Um, Jeff Lebel?
Hi.
And Leah Romano?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Great. So that's six oh, right? Excellent. Thank you.
Or Jeff.
Five zero. No.
I'm sorry.
Five zero one.
Who? Oh, Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. So I think we're up to the part.
Just one point really quickly.
Yeah.
For, for, you know, if you want me to look at, I'm happy to look at it again if you want me to, after, you know, if it would be helpful, uh, as you incorporate those things. The second is I would urge you not to, not to wait till October 1st to submit it. Try to, a day or two before, just something always goes wrong. Uh, my firm has a, a, a hard and fast rule. We always submit one day before. Just because you never know what's going to happen.
I, I actually, I do know what's going to happen with the state. It's going to break like two days before and it's going to be, um, an absolute disaster. So thanks, thanks for the reminder, but, um, yeah, I'll be submitting early, hopefully.
I appreciate that.
Uh, Stuart?
Just one, uh, comment, uh, in support of what, uh, Jeff Lebel said previously in terms of trying not to scare people, not only with the build out, but there is, there is context here. And Rod, this occurred, uh, back in February 16, before you, I think, were, were here in town. There was a proposal from the planning commission to do a 350 acre development, uh, zone with densities up to eight units per acre. That was not well received, um, understating it. That was not well received. So I just urge a bit of caution in the direction that you're going to take so that, so that the reception on the part of the public is better than what occurred back in February, 2016.
Great. Thank you, Stuart. Uh, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah.
And I'd like to move on.
I'll try and keep it short.
No, no, I, but just after your comment, since we already, go ahead.
No, I was trying to respond to Stuart's comment. I, I, as much as I respect Stuart, I don't agree with what he just said. Brandy Saxton was given a, um, sort of, uh, generic map and I thought she did a nice evaluation. Uh, it's, it's not about how we develop 350 acres, rather, here's the information we have available. So if I may capture Stuart's point, let's, uh, grab what Stuart just said and look at this density consideration in the context of real site conditions.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much. Um, I think the next agenda item is to discuss the wastewater next steps. Um, so we heard from Tom, which is really helpful, but, uh, Jackie, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the way we wrapped that up, what I heard was, um, outreach between the select board and, um, and the school board and, um.
And we'll wait to hear back.
Yeah, and Tom offered to contact, uh, the select board. Claudette has been gracious enough to be on our call. So I, I, you know, I feel like what we want to capture as a next step here is the school board and the select board. Well, or Tom Camden and whoever they decide to talk to, uh, will have a discussion.
Great. That makes sense to me. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Board will meet on this, yeah, maybe the school, Tom Camden and the school board will meet on this topic, I think is the next step. Okay?
And.
What, uh, this is Jeff. I just stepped out for a second. What's the agenda item?
We're discussing eight, uh, the, the wastewater next steps. And Jackie was suggesting from Tom's, it sounded like that he, the school board and the select board are going to reach out to each other and have a discussion and then we'll be looped in after that.
Right. Okay, thank you. I, I, I mean, my perspective is that makes sense. I, I, I did have a question, which is whether there would be some value in trying to find out, do, maybe do a survey of, of people downtown to find out whether if there were a, some kind of, um, system-wide septic or sewer system available, whether they would be interested in connecting to it. Just, I don't know. I mean, it just strikes me as, as, as knowing that would be helpful, but it.
Okay. Do you want to make that a future agenda item to discuss?
You know, I just think that we ought to be thinking about things like that. That might not be the right thing, but I mean, how else would we know if there's demand if we don't ask people? So it's just something to think about.
Okay. Any other comments on this topic? If not, we can move on to Jackie. Um, if you want to give a brief report on the town plan action items. I know it's only been two weeks since we met, so I'm not sure. Okay. Great. Um, any other business? Uh, Brian?
Sure. It, it's actually on the town plan action item. So I'll wait till after Jackie's report.
Oh, she said she, she's good. Um, what, what would you like to add?
So, um, last meeting, Jackie mentioned that the select board is taking up the, uh, the action in the town plan regarding, uh, possible, uh, town body on childcare. And just wanted to inform the group that I received, was an email correspondence a little over a week ago from Mary Leighton on this issue, um, asking for guidance, uh, on such a, such a body. And I responded with my thoughts based on the research that we conducted for the town plan. Um, and, and I haven't heard anything since then, so I don't have any further update on the select board's plans. But, um, I hope, uh, that, that it's a recommendation that's fully embraced. And, um, and, and I said, we'd be happy to further support her, uh, and the select board on this.
Great. Thanks for that update, Brian. Okay, um, so future meeting schedule and agendas, uh, Rod and I realized when we were putting this, talking about the agenda, that, um, our next meeting is on Thanksgiving and the meeting after that is on Christmas Eve. First, we have the October 22nd and that's fine. Um, but for the November and December meetings, we're going to need, need to change the dates or, I mean, we could do one meeting for November and December just because of the busyness of the holiday season. What are people's thoughts on that? Or do you want to meet on Christmas Eve? Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, uh, instead of fourth, let's go second.
Um, okay, so no, sorry.
12.
November 12. Um, does that, Rod?
Can, can I just, um, get Jeff Goodrich to clarify? Does he mean the second, uh, Thursday of both, uh, November and December?
Yeah, so, so we, it happens every year. We used to do two meetings a month.
Right, okay.
Let's, let's do the second and, and if Thursday doesn't work, let's find a way to meet once a month.
Okay.
And what are other thoughts? Does that make sense to people?
This is Leah. I think it makes sense to focus on that or, um, there has to be a, a poll to kind of confirm before we advertise. I think we just need to, I think there's work to do and so it would be good to meet.
Okay, and what did, are you personally available on the second Thursdays of November and December?
I don't want to say indefinitely that I always am, but I, looking at the calendar, those two in particular, I'm fine.
Okay. Jackie, does, does that work for you?
It's fine. Yep.
Uh, Jeff Lebel, work for you or are you still there?
I'm here. Um, second Thursdays are not particularly good for me, but, um, I can do it.
Okay. Okay. So that sounds like everyone, uh, Rod, are you available?
I actually need to check. There could be some issues there, but okay, I'll let you know.
Okay.
And but just right now, just to reiterate, uh, Melissa, we're talking about October 22nd, uh, November 12th and December 10th. Those are the three, next three meetings.
That's what I have. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, and agenda items, uh, what is there recommendations, suggestions for what should be on our next agenda? Jackie?
I think we might want to revisit our town plan action items for the planning commission.
Okay. Oh, good. Yeah.
Yep.
Rod, did you?
Um, one of, one other thing that I should have probably brought up under, uh, announcements or something, updates. Um, the, while we didn't have an approved town plan, um, we experienced the, uh, village designation expiring with the state program. And so now that we both have an, an adopted and an approved, um, town plan, we are eligible to reapply. And so I have commenced the process of, um, making a new submission. It doesn't call for too much participation from the planning commission or the select board. There's some technical things to do with, uh, shaking the application and then there's some obligations, uh, that we have, uh, to meet. One of them is that there'll be, uh, publicly noticed, um, walk about the village, uh, scheduled for 10 AM on October the 16th, um, which is a Friday. And, um, then, uh, subsequent to that, on the 28th of October, there's a select board meeting where there'll be a presentation from Richard Amore from the Department of Housing and Community Development on the village center designation program. And on the same agenda, the select board will be voting for a resolution, uh, endorsing the application to the village center for the village designation program. And then my hope, and it's a, there's some room here for, to go awry, but there's, my hope is that we can pull the application together and submit it the first Monday of November and have the application heard at the downtown board uh, on the 24th of November, um, which would be good for everybody. And then once we're back in the village designation program, um, tax benefits um, and other benefits will flow to property owners in the village district, um, for various projects. And, uh, so, uh, I, I overlooked to mention that at the beginning of the meeting. So if people have got an interest in joining us for the walk under COVID conditions, um, that's possible. I would warn people that under upper meeting law, it would be very difficult to experience a combination of more than one and one quarter of a person. Um, it, it, and so you choose which limb you're going to throw at it. Um, uh, uh, and that goes for the planning, for the select board and the historic preservation commission as well. I think Jeff had his hand up.
Yeah, Jeff, uh, Goodrich?
Yeah. So, uh, I know I'm a late entrant as a result of getting off another Zoom meeting, but I would like to make a motion, uh, to support the application for the village designation that Rod has proposed unilaterally. And I'm saying that, uh, not with, uh, I'm not sure how to say this. I don't like unilateral conduct, but I'm grateful to Rod for thinking forward in a planning context. It just shows the diversity and breadth of his experience. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission supports the, the village designation that Rod has proposed.
Is there a second for that motion?
Can I, can I just clarify if I could?
Absolutely.
It seems to me that the way Jeff phrased the, the motion at the, at the end of the statement was probably the most appropriate. In other words, not, we don't need to refer to the, whether or not the proposal was made unilaterally or not. Is that okay with you, Jeff?
It is. I, I just want to support the notion of a, of, uh, so, so Rod, if you can give me language that I can propose, help me.
That was, I think the way you said it, Dan, was fine.
I'll, 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 I'll try and capture what you said in the end. Just parenthetically as an explanation. It's so early in the, what I needed to do was to book Richard Amore's time. So the hardest thing to do was to actually schedule people. I haven't even started the application process. So it was my expectation that in the October meeting, you'd have stuff to look at. But I needed to get it rolling as soon as possible and to get other people who are busy to make commitments. Um, I needed to start that process now. And so.
Well, this, this.
I literally haven't.
This is a good plan. I just want to have the planning commission support what you're proposing to the select.
Right. Yeah. And I, like I said, in the minute I've got something of consequence to share with anybody, more than X marks the spot on the screen, I'll, I'll, I'll share it with you, but I, I don't have that yet.
I, I second the motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Leah?
This is Leah saying aye.
Okay. So I think we're unanimous on this.
Yeah.
Five zero. So.
But the counts have changed.
Yeah, five, so, yeah, because.
Six zero.
Because Brian. Cause Brian, Brian's off.
Brian's gone.
Oh, Brian, I did forget about Brian.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So it's five?
Five.
So if I may, my goal was to give Rod cover based on what's occurred. That said, I would like to see a discussion about the town plan process at some point in the future.
Okay, is that something we want to take up the next, next meeting? If we have, I mean, I guess if we have time, but I will put that as an agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay, well, any other comments from the public?
Yeah, just a quick question. What is, what are the tax benefits for the village based on what Rod mentioned with the designation?
Do, do you want me to answer that?
I don't know the answer to that, so yeah.
Okay. So the tax benefits flow to property owners in the village district once it's, if, if it's, if it's been duly recognized and, and it's designated. And so there's a narrow range of things that those tax credits can be used for. Historically appropriate restoration of historic structures, the retrofitting of buildings in the village, the designated village district with life safety equipment, or universal access measures, including elevators and ramps servicing-
So for municipal buildings, not residential, so not really for the residents of the village, but something that would apply for Tracy Hall or the fire and police buildings, but not-
It, it applies to commercial buildings, it can apply to residential structures of a certain kind. It's narrow, it's typically, it typically goes to either commercial structures or, or, you know, institutional and municipal structures. But actually, my experience is most frequently used by property owners of commercial property. Thinking of other towns where this works, apartment blocks, retail stores, adaptive reuse of churches into, into entertainment spaces or arts centers.
Okay, so for this sake, it would be either town buildings or commercial buildings, but very unlike you, unlikely it would be single-family homes.
No, I think, well, call that-
It's applicable to single-family homes, but I, I don't know, I don't have enough experience with that to know. I think that it, there's a fairly, you know, I'm not sure what the thresholds are. What I'm most familiar with is rebuilding general stores that have burned down. Like I said, retrofitting churches, converting, converting warehouses or mills to maker spaces or apartments or affordable housing. As any, any designated downtown or designated village is eligible for a whole bunch of tax credit support for redevelopment or restoration of the structures within the designated area.
Okay, I don't, I don't recall ever hearing this ever happening in Norwich, but uh, for single-family homes, but maybe for commercial churches, town halls, Norwich Liquor Store, Route 5 South, commercial buildings, maybe somebody like that, but not-
Route 5, Route 5 South is not part of the village designated area. The village designated areas-
Right, so excluding that, but not something that somebody who owns a home in the village could expect benefit.
You know, I, I need to refer to the map. I don't even know if there's that many homes that are actually inside the designated village area that would be eligible. I think that's one of the other things that, that we might be missing here. It's pretty tightly drawn around the center of the village, doesn't encompass the entire built-up area that we think of as the village. So Jackie had her hand up as well.
But if there were a home, you know, we have some very large private homes on our main street, and you have to see which ones are included in the, in this village designation, but if one of those homes, they decided to create a nursery school, and they wanted to have handicap access or, or fire safety, you know, so that, because it's a very old building. You know, in that situation, that would be
That could be now-
reused, and they could apply, so I think it's-
Could be an eligible project, exactly.
Yeah, you think of it as, you think of it broadly as this is a way to preserve the character of the town and, and help financially, you know, it can be very expensive to retrofit these buildings and-
I'm just, I, I just think to manage expectations, it was presented like something like the village would get all these benefits, and it, that's not really the case. It's really municipal or commercial buildings and not single-family. And Jeff, who's got his hands up-
Well, I, I actually want to interrupt- Claudette-
Has it ever happened in the past? Because-
Is that question directed at me?
Before. What's that?
I, I can't, was that question that you asked, directed at me or not? Can't-
Well, related to Jeff, he's got his hand up too, but has it ever happened in the past? Because we had a village designation in the-
Okay, Jeff, do you want to answer, and then Claudette, I've seen your hand has been up for a while, so I don't want to ignore you.
Melissa, I would defer to Claudette, and then-
Great, thank you, Claudette.
Hi, don't want to be a stickler here, but moving something that was not on the agenda for, is a little bit of a sticky wicket. So you moved a, you made a motion to support or to approve the town center designation, but that was not on your agenda. Just, just pointing it out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Jeff, did you want to?
Yeah, so I, I, I intend to respond to you, Melissa, as the chair. And village, village designation from my perspective is critical. I went back and forth with other folks on the planning commission of the town with RPC, representation, and Faith Ingles Road. I think it's absolutely appropriate and critical to embrace the village, village designation for the variety of, let's say, grant and funding eligibility that may be available.
Okay, thank you. Jackie?
Yeah, I don't know if we need to address Claudette's concern. I, I didn't really see a motion as necessary. This is an action item in our town plan that's already been approved and adopted, so I don't know. Is it a duplicative effort for us to say, let's go forward? We were, we are going forward with it, that's what our town plan says, so.
Okay, Jeff Lebel?
We could withdraw the motion if that addresses Claudette's concern, which I think is legitimate.
I'm fine with doing that.
I don't think we have to, I don't, look, we, we can move to do whatever we want, we're a commission, we can, you know, whether it follows Robert's rules of order or not, is, I don't think, you know, really, the thing here, we, you know, an issue, an issue arose, we, we provided guidance to our staff. That seems to be an appropriate thing to do. I, I would actually move that we adjourn the meeting.
Anyone else want to comment?
Second.
This, this-
Leah, did you?
This is Leah, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with both Jeffs on both points of moving forward on, on the recommendation and, and, and coming to a close at some point.
Jackie, did you have an opinion on this? Did you want, are you fine with going with the, the flow? Are you ready to adjourn, or do you want to retract the motion?
I didn't make the motion, so why don't we just have a vote?
A vote on what? We already voted on the motion.
The, the motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
I thought, I thought we-
That's a good one.
Were able to adjourn.
I thought you were talking about a different motion.
Well, I was talking about it, and I just heard three people say that they thought, you know, what we've done is acceptable. And so, and then I also heard a motion to adjourn and, and a second, so.
Stuart, did you?
Just, just a question. I mean, what's the harm in making an agenda item for the next meeting and doing it as Claudette suggested?
We, we can certainly take that into consideration. We certainly will have an agenda item when it's time to make a formal recommendation about the village designation. Rod has promised to give us the, you know, come back to us as soon as he has something more concrete. We were just trying to give him some initial direction.
Just, just kind of an, yeah. Go Rod. Okay, so if that, Jackie, did you want to add something?
Well, I just know that when there's a concern about our procedure, it frequently, it comes back to haunt us. And so I just, I don't think any of us have done anything here that we are ashamed of or feel bad about, or think is wrong, but I, I just, you know, if there's a concern about a procedure, I think we should listen to it. And, and it sounds like Leah and Jeff and Jeff did listen to it, and their opinion is we're okay to go forward.
Call the question.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on this?
So Jeff Lebel made a motion to adjourn, I seconded, it's time to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, this is Leah, aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, please, okay.
Okay, so that is for?
Zero, one.
One, zero, one. Okay, all right, well, everyone have a wonderful evening. I'll see you next month.
Thank you.